All right, call the meeting to order. Please join us in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Call the roll, please.
Trustee Spurley here. Trustee Lee.
Yep.
Trustee Heinz. Trustee Youngerman.
Yay.
Trustee Marisak.
Here.
Trustee Bun.
Here.
And we're all here. Thank you for coming this evening. Moving on to public participation. Item A, we have public comment. This is the portion of the meeting where any member of the public has an opportunity to address the board if you're not on the agenda already. All right, hearing none, we'll move on. The MEDC update.
Good evening. I'm the chairman of the EDC, and we're here tonight to have an opportunity to speak in front of you, and I thank you for the opportunity for us to be here. We do this evening. The MEDC, as you know, has an important part of this community, and the board felt it was important that we come in front of you periodically to have an update as to our progress and where we are going in terms of our upcoming fiscal year of 2016. I'm kind of standing here as I'm thinking, I'm looking at this podium, and I'm sure as all of you have probably been faced with for the last several weeks, the politicians all exposing all their sides of how they're going to make America great again, and how much I love all of you, but I'm not going to do that. Instead, I'd like to say that the MEDC is making this community great, and we're very proud of that. For the last 29 years, I have been in this community, and it's been a big part of watching this community grow and develop. And the last year has been an extremely successful year for the EDC, and I'm very proud of that. We have achieved a lot of successes, and having been around and seeing a lot of the EDCs and other communities sort of waver and falter and go by the wayside, it's very exciting to see that the EDC is still here. And after 13 years, we are still a viable organization, and I'm very proud of that. I was fortunate enough to be involved from the early on when the organization was started. I went on in '04 as on the executive board, had been serving on the board for the last 13 years, and then for the last five years, I have been the chairman of the EDC, and I'm very proud of that. It's a privilege and an honor for me to be doing that. I will be the chairman for the upcoming fiscal year of 2016 as well. It is an opportunity that this community is very fortunate to have, and we will continue to provide those services to you and this community as well. I have sort of been kind of talking about, for those who haven't heard yet, I have recently hired a new associate. I'm becoming a lot more busy, which is a good thing. And for the last two months, I've been having to tell my patients that no, I'm not retiring, I'm not leaving. I have a job to do, and I'm also currently the chairman of the EDC, and I have a job to complete for the rest of this year as well. I am not leaving anytime soon. With that, we have a short presentation. I've asked Charlene Fiore, our director, to put some together, so I would like to go through those steps with you, and have any questions at the end you might like to please pose to us. And so with that, I'll turn it over to Charlene.
Thank you.
Thank you, Doc, and everyone here for giving us the opportunity to kind of toot our own horn. I hope I can run this thing correctly, but I'm not so much wanting to toot our horn as I am wanting to talk to you about the things that the MEDC does, the roles that we play. Obviously, marketing and advertising is a big one. Public relations is huge, and communication and information is really a part of what we do. It's like a circle that goes around and around, and obviously, the Village and the MEDC work very close together. Advertising leads to new development and attraction, retention, and so the circle goes. There's nothing that the MEDC or the Village can do without all of you and the business community as well, and so that's the purpose of that particular circle. We do a lot of marketing. Last year, we did put a lot of money into marketing, both online, and every month, we had something in a magazine, whether it was a listing or actually, we were very fortunate. Last year, we had a couple editorials, which actually have more value than an ad that you place, and those editorials are also used by our brokers and developers to tell the Montgomery story. I took a clipping here. This was from the February article, and as you can see, I highlighted in yellow some of the strong points, including not only do we have the opportunity to talk about Montgomery, we also had the opportunity to talk about nine of the companies that are here, as well as our access to the railroad and our strong labor force. I did make a couple copies of those. Everyone's seen them, both in February, and then another one was run in November and December. And that one, this one was focused on the food industry. The one that was run in November and December actually focused on our labor. We talked about quality of life. We actually talked about Aurora University, because everything that we do in Montgomery, we all act as a cheerleader for the community, and that's very important. So then I thought I'd just put a few pictures up here with some of the highlights and the events we actually coordinate. Almost everything that I do is also coordinated with community development. Rich has been a great partner. As you can see here, this is Gray's Mill. Elmer's was in this tour. We try to rotate retail property, land, and industrial. This year, we have the date already set in June 16th. If anyone's interested, we'll make sure that we have room on the bus for you. Some highlights, and this is where economic development gets kind of exciting for me. In the top left, you see an empty building. Well, it's half of an empty building, and that was actually a photo that was taken the year before, and it was 2001 baseline, and for the last 18 months, Kraft Foods has been in there. And that is the property that was also bought by Stag Industrial. And in the lower left is actually the owner of Stag, as well as Jeff Galante, who happens to be somebody that I've known for more than 25 years. And it was actually Jeff who then referred Sean to me, which then created the beginning cycle of the American Crystal deal, which again, as you know, I can't do anything without staff, and Pete Wallers was huge on that project, and of course, the Village as well, and the Plan Commission. But it has to start somewhere. Now, I put Michaels up there because for three years, that building was never shown, and when we did the industrial tour, I actually ended up with five people bidding on that property. And so I don't know what it was called before, but I know that I met one of the owners, and after that tour, I brought a few people through it, and Michaels ended up doing a great job with that. I believe their investment dollars were $6 million. Again, these are other highlights from 2015. South Moon, they also had three offers. One, I know, was an Irish pub, which was kind of fun. I think South Moon fits very well for the community. And then there's U-Haul, which many of you were part of that when we worked with RCG Ventures. And I think U-Haul's going to do a pretty good job. I hope so. We have a few people looking at adding some things in that center, so... Am I talking too fast?
No.
No, okay, good. Huh? I can't hear you. Now, he's not supposed to do that. Okay, so 2015, Riverview is close and dear to my heart because it took Leno quite a long time. When I first met him, I actually was working with somebody in our Toastmasters Club who was redesigning his website, and so he also was a very good cheerleader for Montgomery. When I brought in Lion Metal, not Lion Metal, Lockport Steel, they would come and visit him, you know, eat there, and he kept telling them to pull the plug. So again, I think that's important, that we know that our businesses also can serve as cheerleaders. Chiquita Food Market, this project was a great move for Douglas Road. I think it's going to bring additional business to the community, and I think that this gentleman, he's done a lot in other communities, so it's the amount of money and investment. The interesting thing is the whole family with the Murchell family, who own this, and so many people that are a part of Montgomery's history are also going into 30 and 40 years, so we need to look out for that and then bring in new blood. Again, 2015, the Bridge Open, another success story. The business community and the residents helped get that road referendum passed. Now, that's Jeff pushing me, I bet. Let me just go back here. Speedway. And partnerships. I think partnerships are important to highlight. As you know, we worked last year on three different job fairs. An interesting number I'd like to share is, I believe in '09 or '10, we had about 300 or 400 people seeking jobs. Our last job fair, there was only about 93 people. So again, that was a joint venture with Kendall County and Wabonzi College. On the right, we did two cleanups. That was kind of a part of what we did not only for Douglas Road, but we also added Ocot because we knew that United Sugar was coming, and we really like to keep our industrial corridor clean. And also, I had a lot of business partners that were a part of our cleanups, from VVF to Performance Foods, and those are the partnerships that then helped bring us additional business. More partners. This is Kendall and Kane County partnerships. The top two have to do with Kendall. We have an alliance, and we meet every other month with all the other EDCs. It's really a great group of people. This month, I'm highlighting or hosting the event, and we'll be taking them to South Moon. On the bottom is Kane County. They, I know a few years back, there wasn't a lot that Kane County did. We've been working with some of the people there. Actually, Rich and I hosted a breakfast roundtable that's in the lower right-hand corner. And then on the left, I was asked to nominate a manufacturer, and so that's where I nominated VVF. And although they didn't win, they're very proud of their banner, and it's displayed in their front hall, so they're pretty excited about that. Activities, again, in 2015, the retail show I did attend last May, and then Rich and I also went to the deal-making event in October, which was extremely exciting. We were able to talk to a few people who had been interested in Montgomery, and we continued to let them know that we still want them here. And so again, I think that's important. I put Butterball in there because I believe it was July, we finally got through their monitoring. I had to train a few of the HR directors, but not only did they comply with their RLF requirements, they exceeded them. And so their job count is now at 660. They're one of our largest employers. As you know, they're also looking to buy additional land, and there are 74 jobs over what they originally intended. These are two activities that we do on an annual basis. Again, the golf outing is our only fundraiser, but in that photo is again, the gentleman I keep trying to get to come to Montgomery, he's in the pink shirt in that. He attended the golf outing, loves the community, loves the people here. I just need to get a 60,000-square-foot building with heavy floors for him. On the right-hand side is our holiday party. David's been very active. Teresa's one of my favorites. I'm sorry. And the whole thing about that party is getting everybody to get to know one another and meet the businesses, meet the developers, and, you know, make deals happen and let the name go with the face and feel good about, you know, who's coming to Montgomery. So what are you going to do this year? You know, that's the big question. Okay. We need to redesign our website. It's as old as we are, which is about 13 years old, and this thing's got a mind of its own here, but that's okay. So we've started to redesign it, and this is just a stagnant picture, but what's important is that we're going to highlight our members, especially our executive board members, which would include the Village. These two photos, one is Rush Copley, and the other, of course, is Caterpillar. On the right side, that's a mobile friendly, what it would look like on your phone. That's what's important. Obviously, user-friendly, mobile-friendly, easy to navigate. The information will be up-to-date and current. We'll have an interface with a calendar, social media links, and access. Now, this is not going to be a full-blown $20,000, $30,000 marketing attempt, but we're trying to at least create a professional and clean and up-to-date website, working with the funds that we have. Again, we'll continue the things that work. Business climate is important. Roundtable discussions lead to businesses working together. This happens to be the last meeting we just had here at Village Hall on compliance with the new regulations for reporting under the Healthcare Act, and then also some fraud prevention. Now, the right-hand picture is a very good example of the role that we play in interfacing people together. Obviously, most of you know Brian Dolan, and that is Mike Westling next to him. Brian just got the listing for the settlers' landing, and so it happens that Oswego Fire handles that building, because I worked very closely with them with Planet Fitness, and they were very helpful in getting those deals done, and we want them to go smoothly in the future. And then last but not least is our pride and joy, Ogden Hill. I also, on the right-hand side, well, with Ogden Hill, they want to do, and there's a photo in there, but it's kind of small. You can't really see it so much, at least not all of the tenants that are proposed, but I know David's going to talk this evening, so we can move forward with that. There's also some exciting things with our Tiff District. As you know, Hammond's property is also becoming available and marketed. Obviously, Aurora University, that expansion, I think, is exciting to us. Having property on Orchard, that new development will open the doors for additional retail. And we're open to new suggestions on the marketing side. I've been reaching out to different companies who do studies, prove where we have a leakage, where we need new... I mean, I know hotels is big for us. I think that we started, you know, researching that, and we're hoping to prove how many more hotels, or at least one or two, that we could have in Montgomery is huge. And then last but not least, again, is a special thank you to all the partners, the Village Board, staff and administration. I can't do anything without them. The business community, the residents, and then all of the people who support the MEDC with the board and the partners and the members. And then also, the media is very helpful in helping us get the word out. So again, if there's any questions or if there's something specific, hopefully I kind of covered the whole gamut with our activities.
Thank you.
This scene is dangerous.
Any questions for Shar or Doc?
I have one quick question. The tour this year, will that be industrial or land? What's the focus of the tour?
It's going to be focused on industrial and land.
Okay.
So we hope to show the dome and the property adjacent to it, and I'm still trying to recruit some speculative construction in a small scale, you know, anywhere from 30,000 to 60,000 square feet, where we can get some engineers and people, higher-paying jobs, like the building I need for Lockport Steel.
Okay. Thank you. Those are always a good event. I've had the opportunity to attend several of them, maybe all of them. I may have missed one, but those are always a very good event to showcase Montgomery, so I appreciate that you guys work on that.
Can you mean to sign in here? Steve, do you have any questions? No? Thank you.
Thank you.
We appreciate you guys coming tonight, preparing that. I think it's important that this board get an update from the MEDC once a year, a couple times a year, just to keep everybody at this table up-to-date of what's going on with the MEDC, so I appreciate everything that you guys do for Montgomery. All right, we'll move on to item C, which is a response to public comment, which is from the last meeting. I'll turn it over to Director Young.
Thank you. Last time you had a meeting, we had a resident come out and talk about their neighbor in terms of feeding animals and the problems that that causes the neighborhood. We looked through the village code and the zoning ordinance and really didn't find anything that prohibited someone from feeding animals. Laura and I talked about it a little bit and reviewed our code, and she came up with some ideas that we could modify our code to include some provision about garbage or the manner in which trash is disposed of that could be included in an amendment to our municipal code if that was the desire of the Village Board. So I did talk to the resident that was at your last meeting. I explained to her that as of right now, we do not have anything that prohibits someone from feeding animals. If it does continue to be a major nuisance, then, you know, we'll report back to the board, but if you have any ideas or would like us to pursue text amendment for the municipal code, we can certainly work through that.
I have a comment, if I may. I've thought about this since the resident came in, and do you think that the Illinois Department of Natural Resources would have a problem with that? Would they have something against feeding? Because I know the resident had mentioned that there are coyotes, there are foxes, all sorts of things that come to her through her backyard. Maybe that's a solution to the problem, is get the IDNR involved.
Well, that's something that we could definitely pursue in terms of learning what the IDNR might consider to be a problem area, and we can follow up with you on that.
And just for example, I saw a lot of Facebook chatter about these turkeys along the side of the road and people feeding these turkeys at 30 and Orchard, and inevitably, they get hit by a car, and, you know, if they would, if the animals have learned that, hey, if I come up to a human, I may be fed, I would like to see, I would show interest at least from my seat for a text amendment.
All right. Any other comments? We can mull this over and talk about it at a future meeting. Thank you, Rich.
Thank you.
All right, item D, under public participation, we have David Howitt of Inland Corporation. I would like to address the board regarding sales tax rebate for a new multi-tenant building.
Thank you, President Brawley. My name is David Howitt. I'm here representing Inland National Development tonight. My first part of this presentation is really an apology, and that apology is, for the last 18 months, I've come before you requesting special use approval for a multi-tenant building at the corner of 34 and 30, and then we moved it over to this along Route 34. And the apology comes in because I haven't been able to deliver on either of them. So I want to phrase this that the request tonight for the sales tax rebate is with the standalone sales tax rebate is with the understanding that the board isn't typically inclined to grant this request, and it comes with the need to get this project going. And I want to tell you that both the brokerage community and myself have been trying to get this project going, and Shar as well, at ICSC and the other events for, like I said, since June, when you approve this special use. The tenants, it's a new world. No one's going to feel bad for a developer, and I'm not asking for that, but what I'm asking is that to have our pro forma make sense. That's the reason for the request for the sales tax rebate. It makes a significant difference, believe it or not, even though the dollars may not be very large at the end of the day, but it does make a difference for us to get this project started. The build-outs for Dunkin' Donuts, for example, they're the lead kind of tenant that we are 95% signed with a lease with them. They want to be here. We got back proposals ranging from $140,000 to $170,000 for their build-out, their specific build-out. There are electrical requirements, there are HVAC requirements, the fire suppression system, ceiling tiles, all those things that have gotten out of control over time, in my opinion, as a developer's opinion, but that doesn't matter. What I'm asking for tonight is consideration of a sales tax rebate agreement for this standalone building with the expectation that this would get this deal moving forward. So I believe that the letter that I submitted to President Brawley is in the record for consideration, and rather than go through the specifics, I just, I wanted to make sure that it was known, that it's known from me, that coming before you tonight is not without regret. I'll put it that way. So I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, David. Any initial thoughts or comments from the board? We can certainly mull this over and report back at a later date if that would make sense.
Is the revolving loan fund suitable for this type of activity?
I mean, it would qualify, creates jobs, so I don't know if that helps inland, but...
Right.
No, I'm just saying it's a loan. It's not...
Right. Right.
Dave, what's the total dollar amount? Is there a total dollar amount on this? All I see is...
Percentage.
Percentages, and that's the kind of... I look at this and say, I can see Dunkin' Donuts bringing in sales tax a lot, but then I look at your Nelsaion, your State Farm Insurance, whose State Farm's been trying to get out there for so long. He is a Montgomery insurance agent, and he'd love to be there until over a year.
You have to start the building.
And we're not, you know, we're not going to get money from either one of those guys.
And my assumptions were based on Dunkin' bringing in a million and a half in sales, Firehouse subs plus or minus a million dollars, and GNC about $750,000 or $800,000. So those were the dollar figures that I used.
They're total sales.
Total sales. And 1% sales tax from there would be the portion that would be hopefully split.
Thank you.
And this is, Rich, this is separate from the current sales tax rebate program that's in place? And this is, Rich, this is separate from the current sales tax rebate program that's in place at Agden Hill?
That's what's being asked. I mean, would currently fall under the sales tax agreement we have. And Inland's asking that it be pulled out of that one and that we do a separate agreement.
When's the sales tax agreement we currently have expire?
Do you know when the current agreement expires on Agden Hill?
It should expire around twenty twenty-two, if I'm not mistaken.
It's about six years left.
Yes.
Yeah, it'll be twenty twenty-two.
Okay. Any other comments while David's here tonight?
Not for David, but for, is there any way that we can have Justin run some preliminary numbers and get back to us?
Based on these percentages and the three and a quarter million?
I have a question for David. So if we did not grant this, what kind of delay would you see with, before something would happen there with this building?
I can't answer that. I'd have to get back to you. I'm sorry.
Okay, thank you.
And is this the same percentage that the current agreement has, one percent? Is that what that agreement is for the? Well, that's what our sales tax is. It's one percent. Okay, so we're rebating this whole thing? Well, we'd rebate seventy-five percent for the first five years. First five years.
Fifty, then twenty-five.
Okay. We'll mull this over and either I or, or Rich will give you a call at some point. We'll get some figures from Justin on, on what the dollar amount is. Is, I, I know you can appreciate, I know you've talked to Rich about this, the struggle between, you know, the amount of requests that we get typically, and I didn't know this, was like, everybody requests an incentive, almost everybody, a lot of people do. And so it's really, it has to be a very compelling argument for something like that, or like we talked about with the, with vacant buildings, or something very desirable or, or a stimulus to the area. So that's the struggle that I know you can tell we're having internally, so.
And I can appreciate that.
But we will definitely report back to you and very quickly on this, because I know you need to know. Thank you.
Very much.
All right, we'll move on to the consent agenda. I'll read the items and entertain a motion for approval. We have the minutes of the village board meeting of March fourteenth, executive session minutes from March fourteenth, accounts payable through March twenty-third, two thousand and sixteen, appointment of Lloyd Ochsenslager to the revolving fund committee, and appointment of Stan Zepelak to the revolving fund committee. They're both previously on the committee. And then ordinance seventeen sixteen, granting a special use for outdoor storage for two thousand and one Greenfield, and ordinance seventeen seventeen, granting a special use for an outdoor cafe at fourteen twenty Southeast River Road, and that's Riverview Restaurant. And we talked about both those at the last meeting.
So moved.
Trustee Youngerman.
Yay.
Trustee Marisak.
Yes.
Trustee Byrne.
Yes.
Trustee Spurling.
Yes.
Trustee Lee.
Trustee Heinz.
I carry six zero. Thank you. All right, items for separate action. We have ordinance seventeen fourteen, adopting the annual operating and capital improvements budgets for fiscal year two thousand and seventeen, and this is the second reading. Justin, do you have anything else on this?
There are no changes since it was presented at the last meeting.
All right. Have we received any comments from the public?
I have not received any.
Okay. If there are no other comments from the board on the budget, next year's budget, I'll entertain a motion for approval.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Trustee Heinz.
Yay.
Trustee Youngerman.
Yay.
Trustee Marisak.
Yes.
Trustee Byrne.
Yes.
Trustee Spurling.
Yes.
Trustee Lee.
Yes.
I carry six zero. Thank you. Item B, we have ordinance seventeen eighteen, granting assigned variance for five ninety-six Montgomery Road. This is for the Circle K, second reading, and a request to table this to April eleventh, two thousand and sixteen.
We're still trying to work with Circle K and the applicant to have them in compliance with the sign code with the replacement panel that we talked about last time. That hasn't taken place yet, but in order to move forward, we'd like to leave this open and have you table it for one more meeting.
Okay. Anybody opposed to tabling? All right. We'll move on to item C, temporary liquor license fee waiver, I guess, and request for Dixon Merst Farm Partners. And we would like to talk about this. Nobody's looking at me. Well, he would.
No.
You can come up to the podium. Introduce yourself, sign in.
Matt Garland. I'm with Dixon Merst Farm, volunteer out there. Basically, we're just trying to get a, a little bit of a demographic boost from our current, you know, spring and fall festivals that we've had out there in the past. We had a bluegrass festival out there last year, which, though it was fun, didn't really net us many proceeds, if at any. So we're trying to go about it a different route and, you know, maybe try to bring in a beer vendor or two. Superior Beverage has been brought to my attention. Make sure we follow all the correct protocol, getting a liquor license, things like that. And we're also going to have something like live music. We're still trying to work on lining up bands, and now we have to compete with Swigos, Beats and Eats, and then I believe that Corn Boil as well. But it's something, we're just trying to see if this is another way we can raise funds for the farm.
What would the date of this event be?
July thirtieth.
Okay.
And this is a new festival, right? It's not tied to the other two events that you have?
We had a bluegrass festival in its place last year, but it didn't, it hasn't improved so well.
Yeah. Okay.
We're just trying to bring in something different. Initially, I was like, well, you know, it'd be very nice to have a lot of craft brews there and see if I could bring that completely different demographic. But I've never planned one of these things, so it was kind of a bear. So that's, that's why I've started reaching out to some professionals about it. And they say, start small, work with just maybe, you know, one group, Superior Beverage, have them do three or four, you know, beer handles or something like that, that will kind of go with, you know, the food vendor that we'll have there or, and the meat. So start small, try and make it bigger here.
Okay. Well, from where I said, it makes complete sense for us to waive the, the fee for this. It's a non-for-profit. You guys are operating the, the old farm, and I think it's an asset to that side of the community, certainly, assuming that, you know, everything works out with the state liquor commissioner or whatever you need from our police department before we can issue a liquor license. I don't see any reason why we would object to that and the hundred dollar fee. You're trying to raise some funds here, and we, at least I, I completely understand that.
I agree.
Okay.
Do you have one question? Does Montgomery have its own liquor license that they can, they can apply to use, or should we just go through the vendor route, say a, a Rosati's or a Bristol Tab to use their liquor license?
There is a temporary liquor license classification.
Right. So we would issue a liquor license.
Okay. All right, perfect. That worked.
Okay.
Any other questions?
Thank you.
Motion to officially do that?
This is for separate action, so if there are no objections.
Like a motion? Motion to approve waiver of fee for Dixon Merst Farm temporary liquor license?
Second.
Any discussion? Call the roll.
Trustee Marisak.
Yes.
Trustee Byrne.
Yes.
Trustee Spurling.
Yes.
Trustee Lee.
Yep.
Trustee Heinz.
Yay.
Trustee Youngerman.
Yes.
I carry six zero. Thank you. Appreciate it. All right, so we'll move on. I'm just struggling with these. The next five are very similar. Does, before we get into those, do you want to give an overview of the S S As and what we're doing with these, and then we can vote on them individually?
Right. These items have come up to you before. We had some clerical problems and some publishing problems and, and need to bring them back. This is the same scenario that we've been through with the special use request, I'm sorry, the special service areas in the past. And we'd ask that you move forward with the establishment of these S S A documents. We're cleaning up the language is what we're doing for these four. And we'll set a public hearing within the next sixty days per state statute and then move forward. So it's kind of repetitive, but we find that we need to have you act on these again. So you're correct, Mr. President. They're all essentially the same, but they have to be done in separate ordinances.
Yeah. So the ordinance is actually to propose an S S A, then we hold a public hearing, and then we approve the, an S S A at a later date?
Correct. So, so you are not actually approving the S S As tonight. You're approving basically publication and putting it out there.
Okay.
After the public hearing, you'll have the opportunity to vote yea or nay as your conscience dictates.
But, for example, for instance, like the Michael's S S A, I know the first time that we voted upon it, there was a representative from Michael's here, and he had asked that there's going to be a zero balance unless there's some sort of deficiency. Is that correct? And is that the same for all of these that we're about to recreate?
As far as them being backups, is that the, the question? Yes, I believe that's the case.
We're not levying anything against those?
Nope.
Okay.
Essentially, it's backup.
And we used to call them specifically backups on the?
There's still verbiage in the ordinances themselves that, that refer to the fact that it's backup only.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right.
Motion to approve ordinance seventeen nineteen?
Second.
Any discussion? Call the roll.
Trustee Marisak.
Yes.
Trustee Byrne.
Yes.
Trustee Spurling.
Yes.
Trustee Lee.
Yep.
Trustee Heinz.
Yay.
I carry six zero.
Motion to approve ordinance seventeen twenty?
Second.
Discussion. Call the roll.
Trustee Marisak.
Yes.
Trustee Byrne.
Yes.
Trustee Spurling.
Yes.
Trustee Lee.
Yep.
Trustee Heinz.
Yay.
Trustee Youngerman.
Yay.
Motion to approve ordinance seventeen twenty-one?
Second.
Discussion.
Trustee Marisak.
Yes.
Trustee Byrne.
Yes.
Trustee Spurling.
Yes.
Trustee Lee.
Yep.
Trustee Heinz.
Yay.
Trustee Youngerman.
Yay.
Thank you.
Motion to approve ordinance seventeen twenty-two?
Second.
Any discussion? Sorry, I was lagging behind. Call the roll.
Trustee Marisak.
Yes.
Trustee Byrne.
Yes.
Trustee Spurling.
Yes.
Trustee Lee.
Yep.
Trustee Heinz.
Yay.
Trustee Youngerman.
Yay.
Just keep going, see if anybody says anything. All right.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Good job, Tiff.
Don't we have to do the next one?
Different topic.
Okay.
That's water rates.
I was gonna try and steal one from you.
That's why I was saying, keep going. All right, we have ordinance seventeen twenty-three, amending the village, amending water regulation in and out of the Village of Montgomery. This is a waiver of first passage on the second. We've talked about this previously, and I'll ask Justin if you have anything to add or a brief summary.
Brief summary, we talked about the changes at the last meeting. There's a few other minor cosmetic changes, if you will, in the ordinance itself. Consistency purposes mostly across the ordinance. If there's any questions, I can certainly answer those at this time.
Any other comments or questions for Justin? We talked about this previously. Is there a motion for approval?
So moved.
Second.
Moved and second. Any discussion? Call the roll.
Trustee Youngerman.
Yay.
Trustee Marisak.
Yes.
Trustee Byrne.
Yes.
Trustee Spurling.
Yes.
Trustee Heinz.
Yep.
Trustee Lee. Trustee Heinz.
Yep.
Didn't phase them.
Too many.
All right, I carry six zero. Thank you. Item I, we have a waiver of bid and award of contract to Vizu Sewer for sanitary sewer lining.
Engineer Wallers.
Engineer Wallers. You want to give us a summary on this?
Yes. So from time to time, we do sewer lining as needed, maybe because of deficiency in the sewer, maybe it's leaking. We did some sewer lining, you may recall, along Montgomery Road, where the sewer's actually in one of the driving lanes. So if there's a failure, which there was about ten years ago, it's really difficult to repair and costly. But we have a section of sewer, eight-inch sewer along Montgomery, or, excuse me, along Orchard Road that's not in the drive lane, but it's in the paved shoulder. And if we would have to do any work there, it would be an expensive proposition because we'd have to go through concrete pavement to get there. During the course of construction, there was some damage that a contractor caused to a point on the line where they drilled a light-pole foundation into our sewer. It had to be repaired and has been repaired. But we feel like it's a good precaution to line that whole section. It's about nine hundred and eighty feet along that length underneath Montgomery Road, or, excuse me, Orchard Road, to more or less try to avoid problems in the future, just because they are so difficult to repair if we have to do repair. So we, we've been approached by Fox Metro to, to be able to use their district-wide repair bid that they did annually that they do. And so the costs that we've included in there are based on the bid that they receive from Vizu Sewer. So there's a, some economies of scale. And there, as you can see in the description, there's some allowances in there for different conditions. Until we televise and actually see exactly what we have, we may make some on the, on the job changes. But essentially, we want to line nine hundred and eighty feet. We're going to take a look at the service line that goes to the west across to the animal hospital, see what conditions it is in, possibly line that. That hasn't been determined for sure. So we have a fifty thousand dollar budget for this work, and with the extras, and it could vary even after we get into it, but right now, we're requesting approval of about forty-two thousand, one hundred and forty-two dollars for that work. And then as we get through the project, we'll report back to you is exactly what we ended up doing out there, so.
Excellent. This is F Y seventeen budget, or are you saying?
Actually, the, we're hoping to complete that in this fiscal year yet.
Okay. All right. Comments? Question? Motion?
There's money in it right now for this year, Pete? Okay. All right. Okay.
Motion to approve ordinance seventeen twenty-three?
We can do that again, but we already did that one. Just a waiver of bid and award of contract. I.
Tell him to.
Motion to approve waiver of bid, award of contract?
Second.
Call the roll, please.
Trustee Marisak.
Yes.
Trustee Byrne.
Yes.
Trustee Spurling.
Yes.
Trustee Lee.
Yes.
Trustee Heinz.
Yay.
Trustee Youngerman.
Yay.
I carry six zero. Thank you. All right, J. Purchase of water meter and meter reading equipment. Todd.
Thank you, Mr. President. This item I bring before you is related to our water meter reading and metering technology. As I dive in a little bit deeper on some of our commercial accounts to address water loss issues, I found that of our top twenty-five users, some of those accounts have consumption recorded on those meters that's significantly higher than, I guess, what the manufacturer would generally tolerate as far as acceptable usage in, in a life cycle. Certainly, those meters can be tested in line, and we're doing that with a number of them. About twenty of the twenty-five largest users are currently being tested in line. However, to avoid multiple inconveniences to our customers, and some of these customers are twenty-four-seven businesses, so we'd have to take them out of service, at least water service, for about an hour to do either the inline testing or the replacement of the meter. It made more sense to me to just go ahead and make the replacement of the meter. We can always test those after the fact and use them for parts or replace them elsewhere if they're still, you know, viable. However, given the consumption that's currently on them, that was my, my recommendation to replace some meters. Additionally, in our last meter reading cycle, we identified three hundred and seventy-five endpoint users where the meter is no longer communicating. reading cycle, we identified 375 endpoint users where the meter is no longer communicating via radio read. That's likely because the MXU battery has failed. So I'm just trying to account for those 375. I'm doing 265 or proposing 265 in the current fiscal year. You would see the remainder of those, plus probably some additional as those die in the next fiscal year, and that would bring us up to speed on a more reliable infrastructure as it was intended. So in total, I'm requesting the approval of $11,000 for the large meters and $31,800 from a separate account for the MXUs, both from the same vendor. Any questions? I'm happy to entertain.
Yeah, the 375 MXUs that are non-responsive, how do we get their reading?
Visually, we can still obtain a reading. Currently, they're probably estimating the customer's bill until we can get in, at which time that the MXU battery is replaced or the MXU is repaired, we can obtain a reading that way as well. So there are a couple of different methods.
Okay.
And are the, this in this year's budget?
Yes, sir.
And the money in the budget?
Correct.
Okay.
This fiscal year, though, is just ending or just starting?
Yep. This particular recommendation is for FY16.
And is this replacing the batteries, replacing the unit, or whichever?
When we replace an MXU battery, you're essentially replacing the entire MXU.
Are you satisfied with that being the right solution for us, that particular device?
Yes. I mean, it's the technology that many communities are using, Montgomery is using throughout the entire infrastructure. I mean, 375 endpoints sounds like a large number, and it really is, given that we have that many failures in this past reading cycle. However, when you look at the larger scale, it's a fraction of our end-user accounts, which are roughly 3,000 accounts. So it's about 10%.
I, part of what's on my mind is if this is something that's going to happen every three years.
The life expectancy on those batteries is 20 years. So you will, you will probably see a reoccurring trend here where we're requesting the approval to buy additional MXUs, but it's not going back to the same addresses or accounts.
Okay.
How old are these units that were, if the life cycle's proposed at 20, it seems like we're pretty far ahead of schedule for 10% of our users.
Yeah. Maybe I didn't provide enough detail. The current life cycle is 20 years. When this technology first came out, it was anticipated they had five to seven years roughly. In many cases, we've seen 10 years or more on some of those that were anticipated to be five or seven. There's also a 20-year warranty on these, which means if it fails, the current purchases, if they fail in the first 10 years, it's a full warranty. If it fails in the second 10 years, it's a prorated warranty. So we do get some credit back from returned devices, depending on their age. It's hard for me to quantify what that would be at this time because I would have to know all the independent serial numbers.
Perfect. Thank you for the clarification.
Sure.
Now, if you get in, I hate to get in the weeds with it, but if you get into somebody, some house or some business that was damaged, they damaged the MXU, that's, that would be their cost to fix that, or?
Correct. If the customer damages the meter or the MXU, and it appears to be in some sort of neglect, then they are billed back for it.
Okay.
There are occasions where, you know, a staple or a drywall screw may go through the wiring, you know, that doesn't appear to be intentional. That's just something we're going to resolve.
Okay.
Are most of these readers on the outside? I know your meters, a lot of them are inside, but aren't they on the outside of the wall?
The MXU, otherwise sometimes called the Smart Point, that is the radio sending device. Those are, in most cases, mounted on the exterior of the home, otherwise in a basement rafter or inside of a commercial building. The meters are always internal.
Right. Okay.
All right.
I would move to approve.
Second.
Discussion. Call the roll, please.
Trustee Bond?
Yes.
Trustee Spurling?
Yes.
Trustee Lee?
Yes.
Trustee Hines?
Yay.
Trustee Youngerman?
Yes.
Trustee Marisak?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. All right, the last one. Item K, purchase of replacement of units 264 and 361 and 362. And I'll turn it over to Director Happenstead for summary.
Thank you again, Mr. President. Currently, the department is in ownership of a 2006 International tandem axle truck, which is used for hauling of excavation spoils, gravel, snow and ice-related work. This truck was initially purchased with a 10-year replacement cycle, anticipated replacement cycle. It's been deferred a few times. However, it comes up in this current fiscal year, or in this upcoming fiscal year, FY17, for replacement, and I am recommending that we do replace it. We also had talked briefly about replacing some of our leaf collection equipment and different options related to that program. Both of our current leaf collection machines are quite aged. There's some concerns related to the efficiency and safety of these machines, and they're both in need of some significant overhauling to keep them operational. So one of the approaches that we took was budgeting for a cab chassis leaf collection machine. Basically, the operator of the truck would also be the operator of the leaf collection, reducing manpower from a historic estimate of about 150 to 200 hours per week down to about 50 to 70 hours per week. So the direction that was given in February sometime was to start working on two different vehicles, a cab chassis, leaf collection machine, as well as the replacement of this tandem axle snowplow and dump truck. There's a number of different thoughts, but basically, in short six weeks' time, it's kind of morphed into a cost savings, believe it or not, to the village. It's quite an expensive proposal here in front of you. However, purchasing one truck to meet all of these needs, so a very versatile piece of equipment for us in our department. In order to do so, that would employ a hook lift system. It's similar to what you see on the back of a roll-off dumpster hauling truck, this giant steel arm that hydraulically lifts and lowers these different attachments. In doing so, what we came up with for the needs of our department would be the current dump body scenario to haul spoils and gravel, a V-Box spreader for salt and liquid calcium chloride or beet heat, and then this leaf component was also proposed. What this allows us to do is maintain our leaf program, improve the safety and efficiency, reduce the hours, and also purchase one less truck. It was hard for me to get my mind around the purchase of an independent truck for leaf program when it's a program that frequently facilitates seven weeks of the year. I would realistically have to put that truck on an exercising program in the off periods to keep it well-maintained. So that portion of the truck was, was kind of a idea, a conceptual idea to begin with. In talking with different vendors, it's a definite possibility. I understand the city of Chattanooga, Tennessee, has purchased about five of these, and they've had good success with them. So I know it can be done. It's not a real popular thing, but it can be done. I've worked closely with our in-house mechanic on identifying different cabin chassis units for a number of reasons. Historically, international trucks have been our truck of choice because they're on the state bid. Those trucks have been built to a cost, and sometimes you get what you pay for. Currently, the United States Environmental Protections Agency has a $300 million lawsuit against international for some issues that they've had related to the emissions on these trucks. So I believe that leads to an uncertain future for them, not to mention that a number of agencies have suffered from breakdowns in these pieces of equipment, which affects your overall efficiency and production. Given the versatility that we're proposing here, I'm also proposing that we spend a little bit more on our capital investment, get a better quality truck, take our 10-year life cycle replacement schedule from 10 to 16 years, lengthen that term, likely reduce our maintenance, our downtime, and all those associated costs, and very well could also increase our resale value even 16 years down the road. Another benefit of this concept, and I apologize in being so lengthy, but this is a large request, and I want to cover a number of different thoughts that were had throughout this process. Through this swap loader or hook lift system technology, what we can do is build these various, as I would call, implements for the backend, the service portion of the truck, and replace those as their life cycles dictate, and not necessarily when the cabin chassis are due to be replaced. So theoretically, stainless steel dump body, I mean, that may outlive any one of us in this room. So that doesn't need to be on a 15, 16-year life cycle like this truck would be. That could quite potentially be a 30-year life cycle. It's hard to say with the leaf collection system, but again, we're only using it seven weeks of the year, so I think reasonably we can expect 15 years out of that. The V-Box, I have a little bit more reservation about projecting for quite a long period of time due to the corrosion of that material that's spread, but I think reasonably we can expect it to last as long as the truck. So again, circling back a little bit, the initial budget for the two independent trucks, one was, the leaf collection truck was budgeted at $175,000, and the tandem axle was budgeted $203,000. So if you added the two together, it was a number of $378,000. As I put this together, I was realizing that I wasn't, I wasn't going to meet, or I wasn't going to be at that budget number. Certainly, there's no harm in coming in significantly under budget. However, I identified that the village is also kind of delinquent in our anti-icing program that I just began this year and saw some benefits from, and I've heard from a number of you that you've heard support of that program. So I'd like to ramp that program up with the addition of an anti-icing skid to be used on this truck. That comes at a $25,000 cost that was not initially anticipated. So with that $25,000 cost factored into this entire thing, I still bring the truck in at $41,000 below the budget of the two trucks independently. In order to accomplish this, again, the Peterbilt tandem axle is what I'm proposing. That's available through the Lake County Department of Transportation contract that we can piggyback off of. So we don't need to go out to bid for that. We don't have to waive any bids. That's just a straight, a straight purchase, and that's completely legitimate to do. The other two components, the hook lift system, the actual upfitting of the truck, the snow and ice equipment, the anti-icing skid, the dump body, that I'm proposing should all come from Monroe Truck Equipment. I would be requesting a waiver of competitive bid on that component. And then the leaf collection system is a third vendor, and Dinkmar is the company that I feel most comfortable with and the lowest price on that, after evaluating four different leaf VAC systems. So again, that item would require a waiver of competitive bid as well. The total cost is $334,691, or $691? I'm sorry, $334,691. I'm requesting an additional $3,000 for a not-to-exceed $337,691. That gives me just under 1% flexibility, should there be any items that come up throughout the build that need to be adjusted without causing any significant delays. The last thing that I will mention is that most of these truck builds are in a timeframe of about 11 months, as far as the lead time. This truck is quite a bit more complicated than your standard truck, and Monroe Truck is not able to guarantee us a delivery date, but they're committed to doing everything they possibly can to see that this truck is delivered to us in time for our leaf collection program this year. Regardless of the delivery date, we will still perform leaf collection. It just may be with the older equipment. Any questions? I'm happy to entertain.
Would we be pigeonholed to have to purchase Peterbilt trucks going forward as we, as the attachments outlive the life cycle of the vehicle?
No, sir. They, that's a very good question. These attachments are not connected to the truck in any other way than the hook lift system that's mounted on that cabin chassis. So if, for instance, we purchased a Peterbilt now, and 16 years from now, we wanted to purchase a different truck, we can apply that same hook lift technology to a different cabin chassis and continue to use these systems. Another question that has previously come up by one of you is can these attachments be used on other trucks that we currently have? And the answer to that is no. However, if, at which time we replace another tandem axle, if we wanted to add that hook lift component, we could then swap these same implements, as I call them, from truck to truck. We would not be able to use a six-wheeler implement or a tandem axle-sized implement on a four-wheeled truck. However, you can use, in many cases, a four-wheeler implement on a six-wheeled truck. It'll just look a little goofy because it's not sized appropriately. It can maintain functionality, however.
You mentioned the 30-year stainless steel dump body.
Yes.
Will our old ones we bought 10 years ago fit on this stainless steel?
Our current stainless steel bodies don't have any hook lift system. They could be retrofitted. However, the cost to retrofit probably would make it not worthy of doing. It would also significantly affect our resale of the current truck. That's something I also neglected to mention. Currently, the truck company is offering us, Peterbilt, JX, Peterbilt, is offering a $30,000 trade-in value on our current unit. I would recommend that we try and auction that off with a reserve set at, say, $31,000, and if we fail to achieve that, then we can trade it in at which time that it's due. So we'd be trying to optimize our value. The other thing is one of those leaf VACs would be declared surplus and auctioned off as well. So there'd be some residual value associated with that.
I assume because we're a government agency, we don't pay sales tax on these vehicles?
That's correct.
Okay.
How much is the hook lift portion? I was trying to find that in here.
It's a quite costly feature. I believe it's roughly $40,000 or $38,000.
Oh, there we go.
Yeah, it's $44,477 just for the hook lift and its installation under the truck. That's a 40,000-pound hook lift, probably a more significant tolerance than we would actually ever need. However, in my research, I found that the next lowest model is a 20,000-pound, and I don't know that that suits us well enough. While I'd never recommend that any of these attachments be mounted or dismounted from the truck with material in them, there's always the chance that somebody could attempt to try that, and I wouldn't want to damage such a costly investment based on some stupidity. So I'm proposing the heavier grade. One last item for consideration is that, it was brought to my attention a few months back, that in previous strategic planning meetings in the village before I came on board, there's been discussion as to the color of our fleet. Currently, the majority of our fleet is red in Public Works. The majority of the police fleet is white. Village Hall has white vehicles. My understanding is that it came to be because there's no real continuity between the three. I'm not, you know, I'm not in favor of one color over another. However, there are some benefits to potentially going with white over red. Red is a little bit more costly. It's typically $500 per vehicle, more expensive. It's harder to keep looking nice. It shows scratches and dings, and it oxidizes quicker than the white paint does. It may offer a less valuable resale value, not that that's our main concern. One of the other components of this is some of our trucks, we could be purchasing as demo trucks from some of these truck builders if we wanted to, and those are typically white trucks. Currently, we have some white vehicles. We have some maroon vehicles, but we're predominantly red in Public Works. If there was a change made to the color of our fleet, it would obviously take 10 to 12 years before you'd see the last of the red trucks go and be a totally white fleet, but that's just something, food for thought, basically. I would, I would obviously look for some direction on which way you wanted me to go before I placed an order on this truck. before I placed an order on this truck, however, unless you just wanted to table that for now.
All right. Who wants to go first?
I support the, this vehicle, and thank you for all the research and I, from reading this and discussions we've had. You did a lot of work in a short period of time to come, to put this together, so thank you. And I also support the white vehicle. I think it just, going forward, there's no reason for them to need to be red, unless, again, I'm newer, previous boards may have had great reason for that, but I don't see any reason, especially when you can purchase a demoed vehicle.
Thank you for your feedback.
Anybody opposed to white vehicles?
No, I appreciate Todd doing all this work, too, and I know I couldn't get Green Bay Packer green on any of them, so we'll go with white.
Todd, could you negotiate? It's going to be up in Wisconsin. Could they put a Packer bumper sticker on one of them?
You know, I don't want to give you any ideas, but if you were to place one of those magnets on the back end of our truck without us knowing, it would probably look better on a white truck than on a red one.
That's true.
There you go.
I'll remember that.
All right. Doug, did you make a motion?
I did not make a motion, but I can gladly. I'd like to make a motion to approve the purchase of replacement unit 264.
Second? By anybody?
So moved.
Trustee Marisack.
Yes.
Trustee Byn.
Yes.
Trustee Spurling.
Yes.
Trustee Lee.
Yep.
Trustee Hines.
Yay.
Trustee Youngerman.
Yes.
That carries 6-0. Thanks for everything you did on that, Todd. Appreciate it. We have no items for discussion, new or unfinished business. Just one item that I'd like to mention, you guys should have had at your place tonight, a letter signed by the chairman of Kendall County, the mayors of Oswego, Yorkville, Plano, Sandwich, and myself urging Congressman Holken to support the METRA study that was underway that was halted, and we'd like them to continue with that. I think I sent a draft of this to you guys to take a look at, but just wanted you to know that the signed letter had gone to the congressman's office. Anything else under new or unfinished business?
I have nothing. Thank you.
I have one item. I wondered if we could get an update on the grade crossing improvement at Webster? If we're getting any more information about that?
I have reached out a few times now to the project manager that I met with in the fall when they were positioning themselves to do that work right before we had that late November snowfall, and I have no response yet back from him. It's my understanding, at least from the fall, that the biggest concern was not the rail crossing work happening in a, in a colder season or inclement weather, but the, the ability to quickly patch that asphalt after the work is completed. I, I have under good authority that the asphalt plants won't open likely until the very end of April, beginning of May, so my guess would be that would be about as early as they would commit to doing it. However, I will continue on them to try and get us an answer.
Just want to make sure we don't get lost in the shuffle there.
And let us know if you need us to start sending emails again.
Yeah.
It seemed to work the first time.
I'll wait to bring the Packer stuff up till football season, so there's no new business here either.
Nothing from Denny? All right, future meetings, Plan Commission meeting April 7th, and our next village board meeting will be in this room at 7:00 PM on April 11th. I'll entertain a motion to approve or to adjourn?
Second.
Trustee Hines. Trustee Youngerman.
Yay.
Trustee Marisack.
Yes, ma'am.
Trustee Byn.
Yes.
Trustee Spurling.
Yes.
Trustee Lee.
Yes.
And we're adjourned. Thank you.